Go ahead and begin our city council work session meeting, and I'd like to read a notice on this before we begin pursuant to Mayor Richard F. Brun's proclamation dated February the fourth, two thousand twenty-one. The Orem City Council meeting on January, on February the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one will be an all electronic meeting. There will be no anchor location for the meeting. The city cannot ensure the recommended minimum of six feet of social distancing for meeting participants at the usual anchor location in the city of Orem. Council chambers therefore, holding the meeting at the city council chambers would present a substantial risk to the health and safety of all those who may be present at the meeting and may contribute to the spread of COVID nineteen. There will be no public access to the Orem City Council chambers. Those desiring to view or participate in the meeting must do so electronically. To view the meeting, please go to orem.org forward slash meetings. To make a comment, please submit your comment through orem.org forward slash comments. Written comments will be accepted before and during the meeting. All written comments received will be entered into the record and forwarded to each city council member for review. Written comments will also be read aloud during the live meeting when required by law or when time permits. As technology permits, the city council may also accept oral comments. Once an item has been voted on, that item will be closed to additional comments. Thank you for your cooperation during these challenging times. We'd now like to go ahead and start our work session and begin with a discussion on the status review of the water tank, the proposed water tank for Orem. And Chris Shurkey is our presenter, so I'll turn the time over to Chris.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council for this opportunity to provide an additional update regarding the ten million gallon water tank project located on adjacent to Four South or close to Four South between Fourth West and Eighth West as as we have discussed in the past. I wanted to share, there's no formal presentation given tonight. We wanted to give you a summary and then update as to where we feel we are in summarize some of the comments and give the council some opportunity to also discuss some of their their insights and provide additional feedback for for city staff. In our city council meeting, I'm going to share my screen here in our work session or Thursday evening meeting. Let me pull the screen up here. Everyone can see that I believe there were five locations that were reviewed and and discussed, and there has been some movement. We wanted to give you updates on some of the those some movement that's occurred in particular with the Farley property as well as the school districts, two softball fields. I Bren Abibi has been in touch with the school district and reached out to them and and Mayor, I believe that you have as well.
Yes.
And perhaps you can give an update on on the two softball fields and that property associated with those.
Well, I've been in touch with Superintendent Farnsworth. They took the proposal that we use those softball fields and buy that property from them or put it underneath there. And they went before their committee that considers land use last week. And the committee voted against allowing any use of those ball fields for the city water tank. So that option is out.
Okay.
Just confirm which color that is, please, Chris.
It's blue.
Two ball fields there on the western side of Orem Elementary.
Tom, can you see the screen that I have presented? Is that?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm as we go through.
Very good.
The colors, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so that's the two west ball fields there. Then the Farley property with which is showing has the the purple or magenta tank at this location here. I believe Sam Kelly is on the call and he has been working with that property owner, Mr. Arlen Farley. And he has an update on recent conversations with him.
Yeah, I received a letter from Arlen. Actually, I've received two since his initial proposal. One was modifying option two, where he wanted to sell the complete parcel and then have an acre and a half there as part of his living estate. He wanted to modify that from eight twenty, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per acre to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars per acre. And then last week, speaking with our appraiser, he asked, our appraiser asked if he wanted me to reach out to, wanted him to reach out to Arlen. I said, yes, I'd like to be as transparent as possible. And apparently there was some contact there and I've received a letter from Arlen essentially stating that the price of the property is to be what the seller is wanting to offer and not necessarily be negotiated by due due to a property appraiser and or appraisal. So essentially unless that appraisal that we've ordered, if those numbers come in and match his, then Arlen won't won't be, he's not willing to sell. So I'm just waiting to get that appraisal back. Likely it it won't be eight, eight hundred and twenty-five or eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It'll probably be less, but I don't know how much less very well could be significantly less. But that's kind of where we're at with the Farley property.
All right, and then we've also had contact.
Chris, how how big is the Farley property?
It's five.
Five point seven acres.
Five point seven, okay.
One one thing, Chris, I could just jump in for a second.
Yes.
I don't think it would be appropriate for the city to pay more than the appraised price. I have no idea what the appraised price will come in. And I'm not in favor of the Farley property, but I'm particularly not in favor of paying greater than the appraised price. So.
Agreed.
There was an additional property that was discussed in the in the meeting on two meetings on Thursday. And it's regarding this property here, which is under contract. It's at six seventy-three West, three fifty South. And then I believe Sam has also had recent conversations with this property owner.
I have the the property owner there is Brent Larson, and I reached out to him to see if he was in favor of doing an amendment to our current repsy to extend the terms of of closing on 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 that property due to the constraints that we're up against as far as trying to to locate an area for our tank as well as the the pump house and well. And and he was amicable to that and is willing to go ahead and do an extension. We were set to close within forty-five days of when we initially had had that agreement signed and he's willing to go ahead and and do that. And he himself has had some of the neighbors reach out out to him. None of them very favorable for selling the the parcel to the city. So he understands the pressure we're 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 under and is willing to go ahead and extend. So we're in no big hurry to hurry and close on that parcel.
So Sam, what would he?
He was amicable to amicable to to whatever. So I I I was going to work with Heather and we could extend thirty days, forty-five days. I mean, whatever seemed reasonable. We're just now at this point, I know we're going to be discussing possibly putting the tank there where the baseball field is and how we can kind of work work through that. So Bren is scheduled to meet with ASD next week. So we'll probably have a little bit more direction and and have an idea of if that's going to be an option, if it's a feasible option and what we can do with baseball for for Mountain View. Likely there might be another neighborhood meeting to discuss either A, we they move their baseball operations maybe to 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 UVU or Orem High or or Timpanogus and or we an option that we've discussed is possibly putting the the baseball facility on the square parcel and or I guess it's the rectangular parcel due west of 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 Mountain View that 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 way they wouldn't ever miss the season. But then we would likely be discussing, you know, some options with with those neighbors who may not want to have, you know, foul balls hit into their yard or or listening to baseball. I mean, we're just kind of trading one set of neighborhood issues for another. So I guess we'll kind of get some more direction from them come next week in that meeting with them, that Brennan Chris and Taggart will be part of.
I would like to to also represent that Mr. Larson has been extremely good to work with. He's been very patient. He's had opportunities to to look at other investment properties and we're under contract. So, you know, we we are concerned about that and and he is open and willing, like Sam suggests, to to extend that out for for a period of time. So we we are very appreciative to Mr. Larson for that and his understanding. Just kind of a general overview, and I I think council members, whoever has was able to attend that those meetings that night. I I I hope that you had a sense that or felt that we our presentation was reflective of kind of the history of how we got into this point and that obviously this decision to to pinpoint the exact final location is not done. And it's not not simple, and we're trying to work that out with everyone and the neighbors and and with council's direction and support as well. So we have appreciated this this process to date. We have received, I think during the the meetings, we've received close to a hundred and fifty different chats, most of which were questions. Many of or most of those questions were already answered, I believe, in the frequently asked questions document that we have on our website. But there were some new additional ones and we are, as you can imagine, in the process of going through those and updating that document, which will take us a little bit of time. We did receive some very positive feedback after that meeting and from from community members, including some that we met with, you know, four weeks ago originally. And they felt and have expressed, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but they've expressed to me that they felt that this was an extremely transparent process of that Thursday night and that we have garnered some additional support. I I believe that they're also concerned that the exact location hasn't been identified and they're anxious to know what that will be. And with that, I'll I'll zoom into this area to the north. These three areas, the yellow and the green and the red. And I think these, based on some feedback that we're getting right now, or perhaps one of these is going to be the preferred option, depending on how the Farley deal transaction occurs or if it even happens. And you know, if there's a Neil or Bren or anyone, Jamie, if anyone else would like to chime in here at this point, or if not, then I turn it over to to Mayor Brunst for a continued discussion.
I guess I would just chime in that my discussions with Superintendent Shane Farnsworth have have been very constructive. It hasn't been, there hasn't been sort of contention or friction. There's been very much an openness to to see if if we can find, you know, a workable path forward as it relates to the the baseball field and you know, the one, the one joke he he responded with was, you know, he he thought he he was going to get rid of us after working for the last couple of years on on the fitness center so closely. But guess he guess he can't get rid of us that easily. So but I he's been very complimentary of how how we've been able to work together and find win wins for the fitness center and and believes we can, you know, continue to work in that manner as it relates to the placement of the water storage tank.
If there's no other comments, I would like to make a couple of comments, Chris.
Yes, please.
So on the red square there, if in fact that were the preferred option, I believe that's close enough to Larson's property that we could still use that as the pump house and run the water over to the tank right there. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. The area over the ball field is a large area. The the amount of area you need for the water tank is not that great, is not as great as that area is. So a couple of options that I see that would be close by anyway would be to take the ball field and move it if if you could zoom back out for a minute, Chris, and not the other way. There you go. And actually place the ball field in the green zone where it would be placed up on the northwest corner and then face southeast. If you did that, you'd probably have to remove about five trees. But you may not, I'm not sure. That would still give us plenty of ground. It'd still have three hundred feet from the road for the width of the tank going north, and then you'd have another five hundred or six hundred feet east-west for the tank to be that direction. That's one option. The other option would be to take the ball field as you mentioned earlier and put it up west of the Mountain View High School in their field there and then take whatever activities are in that field and bring them down to the green area on the north side of the community park where the green shading is.
I'm trying to to get to that just a sec.
Sure.
Mayor, can I ask you a question while he's he's? So I'm not sure if they still use that area for soccer. I know at one time a few years ago, they used that grass area for high school soccer.
You're talking about the north end of the community park in the in the green zone up on top?
Yes, just north of the baseball diamond.
Okay.
So that area that you were just talking about right there.
Sure. That I don't know. We would have to check and see what it is that they want and and need and and go accordingly.
But yeah, you can see.
There they do.
Right there.
Yes.
And and I know that, you know, typically the girls soccer is played in the fall and the and the boys is in the spring. So the baseball and and the boy soccer would perhaps have a conflict, but it's it's much easier to find a place to play soccer than it is baseball.
Yes, and we have other soccer fields. As as an example, if you go down to Twelfth South and Main to the elementary school there, there's a large area you can play soccer. As Jamie and I were talking, we have other schools close by. So you have Centennial that has a huge ball field out behind it, the new Centennial's elementary school. And the elementary school does not have a baseball team, but there's a very large baseball field there with a backstop. And if area were needed, we could use, maybe trade with that and then maybe use some of the syrup park land just to the south of the Centennial School for any activities that the kids are involved in. The softball typically is going to be after the time that the elementary school gets out. So you have the area at Centennial. You also have a beautiful new area at Cascade. When they took the old building down and transferred that area into grass area and built a new building to the north, they put in a brand new, beautiful backstop and have a huge park area there. The kids do play on that during the day, but I don't believe that they're there after about two thirty. And that area could be one that could possibly be used. So that could be used for soccer and baseball could stay here. Or it could be used for baseball. And Cascades about twelve blocks to the east and two blocks to the north. And then the school to the south is not that far away. About twelve blocks to the south on Main Street. So I think there are other options out there that are available, and I think if we worked with the Alpine School District and just said, you know, what can we do? How can we work this out? I think we could come to a a decision that would be helpful to everybody.
Mayor, this is Brandon. Can you hear me?
Yes, Brandon.
So just give you a heads up. So most high school baseball, they show up around one o'clock. Games are at three. Just just so that you're aware that being at an elementary school may not work if if that's a concern, so.
Or you could shift it an hour, but.
I I don't know what, you know, what, because normally they play a JV game right after it. And so you start bumping up against dark.
Well, they play double headers, so.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. They play the varsity game first with followed by a JV game.
But if you put the ball field to the west of Mountain View High School in that field and then.
I was just bringing it up for elementary school.
Sure. But I mean, you could move soccer to elementary school as well, so.
So Mayor, I've got a question.
Sure.
So Chris, can you go back and show the 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 yellow and the red? And I want to look at the Farley property first and see how many houses border that property. Because I think that's going to open up a big can of worms. And I I I don't like the Farley. I don't want to spend four point eight million or whatever it is on the Farley property, so.
There are nine, nine or ten that are immediately adjacent.
And how many are bordering the the original yellow site?
I think you have seven there.
Ah, hold on.
Sorry, Chris.
No. It's just it's kind of thinking here. Okay, on this site here, you had one, two, three, four, five, six. This is all owned by the same person, seven, eight or nine, if you go all the way up.
So if if we look at the baseball field, so I mean, is there a way to to have a pump house over there and not have to buy that house to save money? Or is that not?
Regulations won't allow it.
There, I I would say if we were to decrease the amount of recreational area, that's true. If for if if there was a need to perhaps consolidate or combine the restroom and the snack shack and make it more efficient and then include perhaps a pump house with that same structure, there may be an opportunity there.
I was just saying, if that would save money, then you don't have to buy the house. Because I think with the Farley property, it's way too much money for in my mind to 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 buy that property for the for the tank. So I I'm leaning, I'm a baseball guy, so I'm, I don't want to see a baseball field taken out, but it will be restored better than it was. So I think that's the best option. It's the red, in my mind, so.
Hey, Dave, if I could piggyback your comment.
Yes.
One of the other benefits of being under a a baseball field is you never need to worry about tree roots or tearing up trees. And that was one of the benefits I saw of the baseball field area.
Good point, Tom.
Brent, do you have a question? Your hands up.
Yeah, I thought you'd see my hand finally. As far as the Farley property, maybe you could ask this, Brandon. Are there any tax incentives for the city or for Mr. Farley if he sold that?
That's well beyond me. There's definitely not for the city.
Okay, well, if you know.
Then it part would be for he'd have to get with a CPA or some accounting firm or something to determine what kind of tax impact that would have for him.
No, I was just thinking.
Actually, if I can, part of the agreement, if we sell it, would to pay the back taxes because that property wouldn't be in in a green belt anymore. And when I called the the county assessor, it was like about thirty thousand dollars in back taxes.
That'd be on top of his asking price.
Right.
So there's a requirement, once you convert a property out of green belt into another use, there's kind of a clawback provision in the law that requires you to pay taxes for, I think it's the last five years.
Okay. Then another thing. Want to say something, Tom?
I was going to ask, even when a tax exempt entity is buying it, Jamie?
But the responsibility for the taxes previous to the date of purchase would be the responsibility of the property at the previous property owner. So, yeah.
I'm not in favor of the Farley property, but I I was thinking if it could be to his advantage, save him quite a bit of money. It might drop his price quite a bit. Anyway, on the on the yellow baseball field and and the one on the west, just I don't know, the measurements are not there. I don't think those are big enough for a baseball field, are they?
All of them are big enough for a baseball field.
This green one is?
Yes, all five options.
Have we done the measure?
That would be a rectangular water tank there. The other, the red one could be rectangular or square. The yellow one would be rectangular. The blue one would be rectangular.
Mayor, can I clarify? Are you are you suggesting that once the project is final and complete, that those improvements would be installed? Not not prior to so that baseball wouldn't be interrupted. There would still be an interruption. I or are you suggesting with your idea that we would build a baseball field ahead of time and then excavate for the tank?
That that is correct.
Because I'm not sure.
We would build a baseball field if it were west of Mountain View or if it were in the green space, we would build a baseball field for the team that would be ready to go for them. And then we would take over the baseball field as it sits, the old one.
One baseball field in the green?
I'm just kind of doing some preliminary measurements on Google Maps, and that would be, that would be an extremely tall order.
So the, as I measured it earlier in the day, the red area would actually shrink down. It would not be that big if you were to do the baseball field in the northwest section of the cascade of the community park. So you'd probably lose the top third of the red area, but you would still have enough area to go wider to put in a rectangular tank there going east and west.
Let me suggest that part of the benefit of going in this red area would be that we would have an area to disperse the spoils pile, if you will.
Sure.
And then and then not have as much export material. But if we didn't have any place to put those, which would be out in the green area, that would that would be challenging. But if if we put home plate at the top of the corner of where this green tank is, that going, you need about four hundred feet when you include stands and everything else.
Correct.
I guess if we blew out the whole pavilion and and parking lot, is that what you're suggesting is we would?
I don't know that you'd blow out the whole thing, but you'd certainly have to take out probably half of it.
Okay, I see. So if 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 we did rearrange that, then then those those options do become more viable.
The only kicker in that, and that is correct, I think it's a viable option. The only kicker is those are wonderful trees, old trees that people love. And we'd have to let people know that we would replant new trees there for the future. So they would have a feel for it.
There there's also an advantage that you brought up, Mayor, regarding the location of the the practice facility west of the Mountain View High School. We have done a layout, a preliminary layout on that. That that field could be designed and constructed starting whenever we make an agreement to do something like that with the school district and whenever we get the green light. And that would free up this entire area to be, you know, recontoured and and to install the tank and so forth. While there, they're held harmless with respect to the baseball. I I obviously, we, they have other activities that occur there like. I I obviously, we, they have other activities that occur there, like lacrosse. And they have practices for football and soccer, and they have a discus area and, you know, other things for track and field. So. Um, yeah, we're just, we're just kind of skimming the surface here and and realize that there are, there's a variety of ideas or solution, solutions.
Well, and I again, I would encourage looking at our other green space for those activities uh that may not have a tight time schedule or as tight as baseball.
Right.
Um, and other areas where you wouldn't have to put in a a diamond and a base running area. Uh, for example, with soccer, you know, Cascade, that field outside of Cascade would be beautiful for soccer a- after school lets out. Uh, you know, the area down south would be good. I think we have plenty of green space to work with. It may not be just as close as they want, but we can always buy a school list, I guess.
But I guess, I guess Chris and others from staff's perspective, I think before we start essentially programming and planning infrastructure on school district property, we really need to take into consideration the needs and and the concerns of the school district and essentially look at before we start citing some of these these uh ball fields on specific properties and such. Let's let's visit with the school district because I don't want to be in a situation of essentially making plans with somebody else's property.
And I'm not suggesting that. I I'm suggesting ideas, but definitely we would need to sit down and find out how we can work with the school district to make it work for both sides.
So Mayor, que- question about this. Um, you know, we looked at those soft softball fields that the district's not willing to do anything about. Uh. We own the baseball diamond. Why are we worried about this? I mean, what the district, the district, you know, they're, they're going to tear out another school. They've got Geneva they're going to tear down. They've got plenty of ground. Do we have to pay? Do we have to build a new uh baseball diamond on the, for the school? I'm confused. So our our relationship with the school district as related to the softball fields and the baseball field back in two thousand and sixteen, we reaffirmed a relationship with the school district where we own the baseball diamond, the property in red essentially, and they program it. They own the property in blue or a greater amount than that property in blue, and we program it. So we have always had kind of a reciprocal relationship where they're using our property, we're using their property for programming. And so that speaks to the need to try and find a win-win type scenario. Because in one circumstance, in either circumstance, we're impacting each other's programming and potentially property.
So Jamie, if they traded the blue for the orange or red, and we, then we could do what we want to there, and they don't want to do that?
No, we we approached them specifically about putting the tank on the blue area. And they have come back and said, no, we're uncomfortable with that because we have potential future plans with Orem Elementary. And the moment, obviously, you build infrastructure, you build a tank on that that softball property, then you essentially eliminate that property for use in perpetuity. And you limit their ability to rebuild Orem Elementary. So. And I can see where they're coming from. A- at the same time, as as we've said, super the Dr. Farnsworth has been open to entertaining a conversation about that red property. We've just got to find a solution tied to the baseball field that obviously meets with our budget and our approval, as well as the approval of the school district. And I I will represent too that our interests and our association and relationship with the school district is much broader than this issue. And and so we want to do all that we can to maintain that healthy, positive, productive relationship with the school district.
So Jamie, could you start a conversation with Dr. Farnsworth to explore what his needs are and what thoughts would be available?
Yeah, we we've already, we've already initiated, Brent's already initiated that conversation. In fact, he was on the phone with Dr. Farnsworth this morning.
Okay.
I think that this is Neil. I think that this round robin of discussion is is ultimately kind of pointing back to the reason we brought the yellow uh in the first place, because as we talk about relocating green space, and you say, well, baseball can can go play somewhere else, and soccer can go play somewhere else. That is ultimately what led to the yellow where where the people can go run their dogs and they can go play volleyball and they can use other passive areas of this park. Uh, recognizing it was adjacent to the to the homeowners. But that is ultimately why this this recommendation came as a a first uh first step for all these discussions that we're having.
So the red area, uh I believe is optimal because it is away from the homes. It does not take out the park area for the residents uh and leaves that for them. They're a big portion of this discussion. Um, and so I think that needs to be considered.
Mayor, I've got a comment.
Sure.
So just to reiterate on the Farley property, um I I I don't like the location because it's cost money, but also if we're going to bond to lower our water rates for our citizens, that's going to jack it up, and that's going to defeat the purpose in my mind to save, have a savings of 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 the water bill and the and the four tiers moving forward. So that's my two cents on the Farley property. So I'm not willing to do that, to add that to the bond.
Okay.
Mayor, I too, Mayor, I too am willing to exclude the Farley property.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Any other comments?
I also agree with that. I'm not willing to uh buy the Farley property.
Okay, I I'm not willing to buy it either.
And I would agree. I would agree with that also. I don't know why we would spend money uh when we have other property that we can, that the city already owns.
Yeah, and I'm leaning that way also. This is Debbie.
So I think that's pretty much unanimous. Uh, any other comments? All right, let's go ahead and stop, and we'll see how things progress with staff. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chris and Neil. Uh, let's go ahead and go now to an update on Hillcrest Park engagement. And Brenn Baby is our presenter, and Brenn will turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you. I think um we we essentially went through another positive of the those water tank online public open house meetings was that it it set really a really positive, good standard for us for doing uh new additional um online public open house meetings in the future. And so uh in in general, we want to kind of follow that same format uh as we engage in an online public open house for Hillcrest Park that we did for the water tank locations. Um, Stephen, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yep, you do.
So this last weekend, we uh went live and and sent out eighteen thousand emails and posted on Facebook uh the uh launch of this uh new webpage at OremHillcrestPark.org uh that goes through and uh introduces people to uh where this park area is and shows, begins to show the different, the two concept plans that you as a council kind of narrowed us down to 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 continue to explore and and to take to the public for for feedback. Um, so we did, we did that. We've included those concepts on this webpage, the one that keeps a portion of the the newer portion of the Hillcrest Park building. Um, and the it is downloadable so that people can, you know, dive into this and look at the details and see, you know, what the different aspects are associated with it. Provided, uh, you know, a summary narrative of each concept, and uh people can download also the detail on the the cost estimate associated with these two concepts. So the concept A is keeping the newer portion of the existing Hillcrest Elementary Building. Concept B is the concept that uh shows if if we didn't keep any portion of the Hillcrest Elementary Building. Again, downloadable, uh look at the details of the cost. Then um people can look at uh these examples of the the specific features, especially the kind of the unique or new ones that are called out in the two concepts. Then here below, we provide uh an opportunity for people to begin to provide comments and feedback on each of these concepts. Um, and so we've already begun soliciting uh that feedback and and, you know, giving the public the opportunity to begin to digest these concepts. And uh we've uh given kind of initial awareness or or heads up about uh then these public open house meetings on March fourth. And we'll be providing two opportunities. Again, we'll have a brief uh introduction and and uh presentation um uh about the two concepts and how we got to what we got to and and where those ideas come from. Uh, and then uh again, similar to the water tank meetings, there's also a link here for people to go and see how to join the meetings, uh the the Zoom meetings that will be on Thursday, March fourth. Um, in terms of the meeting itself, so we'll, yeah, we'll go through these concepts. Just like before, there'll be in the chat section of of Zoom, the ability to ask questions or or request clarifications on what has been put together to this point. Um, but uh again, in terms of providing, you know, specific comments about what they like, what they don't like, um, why they they uh feel the way they do, we'll we'll direct them back to this website and submitting, uh you know, that specific direct comment via the website so that we can accumulate all of that in a in a Google sheet and and be able to summarize that and and document it for for later use. Let's see, I I've got Lisa Benson here with Landmark Design, who's been our primary point of contact uh for this effort. Plan to have a a panel of experts again, which will include both the consultants and uh city staff that that will be available to answer questions and and talk further about what we've put together so far. Um, but uh Lisa, am I forgetting anything else in terms of the the agenda and and the plan for the public open house meeting?
No, I think that's, that's a great summary.
So if there's any uh questions, additions, deletions as it relates to how we want to continue to engage the public on on this, the Hillcrest Park uh design process, happy to take those questions and feedback.
Got a question, Brenn.
Please.
On the time, I mean, if you looked at the water tank, it was an hour and a half. And and you're leaving an hour, I think that's gonna, you're gonna I think that's not gonna be enough time personally, uh because the the Hillcrest Park is, it's a huge, I mean, everybody knows about it. So I think we might want to do maybe five to six thirty and then maybe, uh, you know, eight or something, I don't know. But I just don't know if an hour is enough time personally.
Um, yeah, I mean, we can look into that. Part of it is that we've already kind of announced it from here. My thought was that, again, before we had two meetings because there were two different um locations that we were trying to speak to two different neighborhoods. With this, we figured that if someone wasn't able to join on time or wanted to, you know, essentially provide additional feedback that they could stay for the that second hour. Um, but we also don't necessarily have as much to present. Um, uh, I think in the time it will take to present these two options, I don't think will also take as long as as the water tank meetings themselves. So so that's why there was, I guess, the idea of an an hour long for both of them.
I have, I've had just enough uh as many emails on the Hillcrest Park than with the water tank. I mean, it was so I don't know. I I I think that more time would be better because then you're being transparent. And, you know, uh the the whole city is going to be invited, I'm assuming, to this meeting. So I don't know, just my my two cents. I don't think it's enough time.
Uh Brenn, this is Terry. I I agree with David, but another comment on this survey is we're telling people we want to reach out to the community and see what they want. There's no, there's no place you can put what you'd like. You're either having to choose A or B. For example, if you would like to have a splash pad, you you can't put down, I would, you know, on my wish list, I'd like a splash pad. Or uh I'd like horseshoes, or I'd like whatever, outdoor basketball court. So I I think we want to be careful. We're not forcing the citizens, say, you have to choose A or you have to choose B. Maybe it maybe uh overwhelming in number would like a splash pad. Uh, so I don't know where we can put, have feedback. If I was a citizen, I'd go, oh, I have to choose that one or that one. The mayor had an idea about putting uh, you know, the pickleball courts next to the gym or something, you know, you know, about moving it around a little differently than how it's drawn up. So hopefully people realize this is not in stone. And you can, you can have your input on what you'd like.
Yeah, I would just keep in mind that, you know, these these comments, this isn't intended to be like a um a survey where where uh, you know, we're turning this into I guess uh quali- quantitative information that that says, you know, X amount of people want exactly this. At at the same time, we're trying to see if we can, you know, bring the overall visual vision along and and narrow it to some degree. And also be able to show that, you know, there is reasoning behind what has been recommended to this point in terms of trying to spread the the facilities around that that we provide in parks around the entire city. But again, if you look here, it shows that someone could say, you know, what do you like least about this concept? They could put, well, I'll, the thing I like least about it is it doesn't have a splash pad. Or again, they can also say, maybe I like concepts for both. And then uh here in number six, they could say, okay, this is why I like both or don't like either because it doesn't have horseshoes or splash pad or or whatever. So so.
Brenn, we got a couple of comments.
This is actually relatively open ended, um in some ways, more than than a survey that forces like, you know, say, one through five of of how you like it.
I don't think it's open ended, either A or B. Yes.
Tom's got his hand up. Let's let him uh make a comment.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, when I had the opportunity to be the uh council liaison with our rec committee, I found them to be extremely helpful. And I'm wondering why we haven't added this to them to be kind of the betters of some ideas. I have received, like all of you, emails and calls with, hey, we don't need that many pickleball courts. And hey, I want a place to throw a ball or to Terry's point, I might want something else on it. But I think I think this should be an assignment for the rec committee. Once we get through these meetings and then say, okay, what do we really want?
Good idea.
Okay, Jeff Lamson's got a comment.
I just can say it has always been our plan to take it to the Rec Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, they actually have it. I've given them a uh a special invite to take care of this, so we will involve them.
So so Brenn, so each meeting, uh will the five thirty meeting, would that be for option A and the six thirty meeting be for option B?
No.
It would just be, both meetings would just be kind of an open discussion. Okay. And and then and maybe there could be a just a a place at the end of the survey that's just an open ended comment section of do you have other ideas or do you have other other things that you would like to see uh as possibilities?
Okay, uh Lisa, you have a question?
Yeah, well, I was just going to mention that um it's very easy to add an open ended question to the end of this. We can definitely do that. Um, because it's not like we're, this is a statistically valid survey where we're crunching data. We're just looking at general comments. Um, I will say that looking through the hundred plus results that we've received so far, people are definitely expanding on that already. They're already and 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 I think it's a great idea to add that open ended, but um be aware that they are already kind of providing that feedback in these other questions. They're already saying, I don't want any of this. I want a bass pond or I want, you know, there's all kinds of ideas out there. So so we're definitely starting to get that kind of feedback already, but we're happy to add that question.
Let's see, Debbie's got a question?
I do. So my my question is, is our goal of this meeting to at least narrow from the two plans to one and then drill down? Is that kind of our hope? Is it, if enough people want, you know, to save the gym or other you want? Is it just to narrow and then really drill down to what exactly people want? Guess that's my, is that the goal? To go from two to one?
I mean, ultimately, we're gonna have to get to a point of decision making and and ultimately one design before something can be built or that before the construction design drawings can be created. But at that, at the same time, you know, this is the, this is the first public open house meeting about it too, so.
Okay.
And it's trying to find that balance between getting input, you know, and and but also bringing people along and and educating about what's, what is viable, what's possible, what makes the most sense, what's consistent with with overall citywide plans that that we've had to date.
Got a question, Jeff?
Uh, no, I asked my question.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Jamie. I apologize, I don't have a hand as a co-host.
Go ahead.
Can't raise my hand in the meeting, but.
I see your hand.
I I would also, I would also kind of speak to, when we developed our Parks Master Plan several years ago, we took that information and have tried to incorporate what the needs of the community are in part in these concepts. And those needs were determined based on a statistically significant or valid survey. So they are and were representative of the needs of the entire community. So to some degree, when we met with Lisa and her team, we didn't haphazardly just throw a whole bunch of stuff into a concept. It was based upon what the needs of the community are as part of our Parks Master Plan, our Citywide Parks Master Plan, and also in line with a statistically valid survey that was completed as part of that master planning process.
Okay. If no more comments, to me, the most important part of our meeting coming up is to hear what the public has to say, so I'm interested in that. Let's go ahead and finish this portion and move on with the rest of our agenda here.
No, I'll just also, one last comment, Mayor, just that, again, we we've, I mean, we're receiving emails and comments too. As soon as we posted this on Facebook, we started to get a lot of comments. And and I'll just, I guess, submit to you that I think by and large, the comments have been very, very positive. And and so really looking forward to this open house, I think we can keep it and keep it as a as a constructive and and productive meeting, so.
So Brent, prior to the open house, can you share with us the comments that have been coming in with the council?
Lisa, I think we can accumulate and summarize that information, right? And and I would just keep in mind, again, we'll we'll allow for those comments to still keep coming in during that open house as well, and we'll include it all.
Okay. All right, thank you, Brent. Let's go ahead and go on to a review of our agenda for this evening. We do have the prayer to be given by Ken Millet and the Pledge of Allegiance by his wife, Lanay. We do have a presentation on the Beautification Advisory Commission report. And Dave, do you want to mention anything about that or not really? Beautification Advisory Commission report tonight?
No, I think it's self explanatory and I think the presentation, so yeah, we're good.
All right, so let's go to our consent items. First one is approval of the meeting minutes of January twenty sixth and February ninth of two thousand twenty one. The next is eight point two appointments to boards and commissions. So we have Becky Buxton, who is a reappointment to the Transportation Advisory Commission and Lanay Millet, who is an appointment to that. Does everyone know Lanay? Are you all okay with Lanay?
Yeah, she's great.
Okay. And then we have an appointment to the CDBG Commission by Stephen Heaps. He's a resident of the city, been here for a while and wants to give back. Any comments? Anybody know him?
He's an outstanding person, known him for twenty five, no, forty years.
Amen to that, Brent.
Okay, so everybody okay with those appointments and reappointments?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have eight point three, which is an ordinance amending Article two dash twenty two of the Orem City Code. City staff recommends the Orem City Council amend two dash twenty two of the Orem City Code, which is the Employee Appeal Board to include the two additional department representatives who are now serving on the Employee Advisory Council and to increase the quorum requirement from six board members to seven board members.
Mayor, can I just speak to that quickly? This is Heather. We we have an outstanding issue that's pending before the city, and we'd like to remove this from the consent calendar and bring this back to the council at another meeting.
Okay, all right. So shall we continue that or remove that?
Why don't you go ahead and remove it?
Okay, all right, that's fine. Then we'll go ahead and move on to our scheduled items. The first one is nine point one, which is a public hearing to allow public input regarding the issuance and sale of not more than forty five million aggregate principal amount of water sewer and storm sewer revenue and refunding bond series two thousand twenty one and be any potential economic impact that the project described herein. The finance with the proceeds of the bonds issued under the act may have on the private, that the act may have on the private sector and all related matters. So we're looking at public input here. Any additional information? Are we just open it up for the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor, you'll just open it up for the public hearing, take public input and then close the the.
Public portion of the hearing, yes. Okay, then nine point two is a public hearing, amending sections, and you can see them there. Jason, I'm hoping that you can explain. So we have a couple of options here. We have some options that the Planning Commission has put forward. We have some options that the City Council, I believe, would like to move forward on. The the ones that I see that I would like to move forward on is the Arts District Option One and the North Village setback option number one. But Jason, maybe you can explain number one and number two of both of those.
And option, you bet. Thanks, Mayor. Option two is the one that we presented to the council about a month ago. Option one was, as we looked at the review with what the direction that we had from the council with the res B in the North Village District, we wanted to be consistent with that requirement in the Arts District. And so option one reflects the consistency between North Village and the Arts District, where we're wrapping that fifty feet around the residential portion. The rest of that district is surrounded by streets on all other sides of at least fifty feet in width. And so we felt option one with is kind of the most consistent with that, and so we would prefer the option one move forward. I'll have pictures and and describe that further in the meeting.
Yes, and option one is the one for Northgate where the setback starts at the back of the property and it allows us or gives us the opportunity to rezone to an R eight, the houses along Fourth West there.
Right, the the rezone is moving forward, it'll come to you another meeting, yes.
This just opens that up.
Yes.
To allow that.
Correct.
Any comments from the council or questions so that everyone understands what we're doing, okay? All right, nine point three is a public hearing, amending the current fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one budget. Brandon, any comments or questions here?
Nope, relatively normal stuff. There are a couple of items I'll highlight related to the care money and the water fund. And there's a component related to changing ages with the recreation admissions. So those are really going to be the three main elements that I'm going to discuss.
Okay. Jamie, any things you want to bring up?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just a number of items to bring you up to speed on as related to just day to day operations. As you well know, we continue in the state legislative session and we have a pro, I, we have now eight days remaining, eight working days remaining in the two thousand twenty one legislative session. There are several bills that we are watching very closely that have a direct impact on the city of Orem. Some of them are bills that we've been able to positively impact. And by we, I I speak to the efforts of Heather and others that spend quite a bit of time during the legislative session, working on these things. One of them is HB eighty two, which is the Single Family Housing Amendments. This is what would permit accessory dwelling units or mother in law apartments to be found or to be located in cities across the state. We have been able to work with the bill sponsor to temper that, to include recognition for cities that have universities in them. The bill language suggests that cities are required to allow or required to have accessory dwelling units permitted within seventy five percent of all residential zones in their city. However, in cities where they have a university, for example, Provo and Orem, Ogden, Logan, Salt Lake City, St. George, there are provisions that would essentially reduce that number to thirty three and a third percent. We already meet that threshold. There are and continue to be some concerns we have with the bill, specifically the fact that cities will not be able to regulate the size of these accessory dwelling units, nor will they be required or will they be permitted to allow more than one off street parking space per unit? As well as there are some concerns we have relative to code requirements that the legislature is willing to forego to allow these accessory dwelling units. Another bill that we're watching very, very, and and so that HB eighty two has actually worked its way through the House. It is now in the Senate and we anticipate that the bill will relatively stay the same. Another bill we're watching very closely is Senate Bill sixty one, which is a billboard bill, which would allow without city approval, the conversion of static billboards to digital billboards. And in, you know, throughout the entire city without necessarily consideration for those billboards in proximity to neighborhoods. So we're obviously very concerned about that bill. We feel like it is overreach on the part of these billboard companies to transition potentially all of their billboards from static billboards to electronic billboards that essentially cycle through different ads every eight to twelve seconds.
So Jamie.
Yes.
If I could just make a comment, according to the information I received today, that has died in committee and is not going forward.
Know that there are several billboard bills.
Okay.
One of them has died, one of them died yesterday in committee. SB sixty one is still very much alive and in its.
So they have. Okay.
And and, you know, Heather can speak to this probably better than I can. Heather, do you want to add to this discussion about SB sixty one?
Yeah, SB sixty one has been circled on the Senate floor, but it will be up for its third reading before the Senate in the near future. I did just receive a an action and a kind of a call to arms from the Utah League of Cities and Towns regarding this, this bill, because they are getting an indication that it will go forward. The other billboard bill is SB one forty four, and it is the one that died, but it was resurrected by the Senate today. So it will be considered by the Senate as well. So we now have two bill, active billboard bills.
That's tough. If I could break in for just a second, Terry, did you have a question or? You're on mute, Terry.
I I I'm sorry, okay. Just a question and a concern. I saw on the city information that this, that we're asking people in the city that are staff, people that work for the city to notify HR if they've had a COVID shot. I'm really uncomfortable with that. Can I get some clarification on why we would want to do that as a city?
Yeah, we we're not requiring, let me just make sure, we're not requiring them to, unless they, unless they choose to provide us with the documentation that they've received it. But we are making efforts to determine if, for example, we need to in the future and if we have the opportunity in the future to bring in a clinic within the city to provide our employees with access to the shot in a similar way we do with flu shots and other services. So for us, it's a means to determine whether or not there's enough critical mass necessary to bring in an in-house, for example, through community nursing services where they can run a vaccination clinic for our employees. That's one of the reasons that we're doing that. Secondarily, too, we also are concerned. We have employees that are very concerned on both ends of the spectrum. So we have some employees who are representing that they will never get the shot. We have other employees that are very concerned and are suggesting that they are not going to come back to work unless we have achieved some level of immunity within the organization. And so we're tracking that so that we can determine prospectively, you know, what is reasonable for us to assume and expect of our employees as it relates to, for example, returning to the office, returning to the work site and continuing their jobs, for example, in city facilities versus at home. And it's important for us to gauge to some degree what level of our employee base has received the vaccination so that we can make a determination as to whether or not, for example, we can require employees to come back. If we're in a situation, for example, we have sixty or seventy percent of our employees that have been vaccinated, then we're working closer to herd immunity and we can in good conscience represent, especially to our employees that are very nervous about the virus, that the risk of that virus has been, to the degree possible, mitigated.
Which also means that if you didn't get the vaccination, your job could be in jeopardy if you're working around others who had?
No.
I I just think that's a private thing that I I'm uncomfortable that the city's asking for that.
Well, I mean, I think administratively, if you were to ask our departments having a general understanding as to whether or not their employees feel safe in the workplace and have access to the vaccine is a big deal.
Okay, why don't you keep going, Jamie, if you have any other items on legislative side?
Yeah, the other, the other item is House Bill three sixty four, which relates to the Utah Lake and the Utah, the creation of the Utah Lake Authority. We've been spending a lot of time with the sponsor of the bill, Representative Brady Brammer, and other cities in the valley in an effort to make this bill such that it benefits the city from the perspective of having a more influential voice in determining the future of Utah Lake. This bill is one that will be heard in committee tomorrow within the House. And a lot of people have worked to shape this bill in a way that we believe it represents the best interests of cities. Now, there are some, including those in water districts and other entities who may not share that same opinion. But from a city perspective, it's our intent to support the bill and believe that it will allow us a greater opportunity to impact positive changes in the lake in the future. Heather, I don't know if there are additional bills you you'd like to speak to as related to the legislative session?
Um, right now, those are the. Right now, those are the four big bills that we're facing as a city and the ones that are moving quickly through the legislative process.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of other information items. The first one is we are Drawing very close to completion on our recreation fitness center. And I know Ryan has extended to you the invitation to tour the facility. I know, for example, he's touring the facility with at least one of you later this week. Obviously, we're very conscious still of COVID protocols that we need to follow. And we will open that center, we anticipate With a need to follow COVID protocols. And so our staff is working, our very capable staff is working to meet Obviously, those requirements. This is a really exciting Opportunity for us and we just want to make sure you have an opportunity To see and tour the facility in advance of the general public. We continue to sell passes and that pass sale is going quite well. Where we are seeing continued growth in the number of passes that we are selling For, for the fitness center. Of course, at the same time, we're also in the process of recruiting for A new recreation director with the planned retirement of our current recreation director Carl Hurst. And I sent you some information yesterday about that recruitment and we would invite you to be a participant In that recruitment effort. We also are continuing with the details associated with the city's compensation and benefit study That we started in 2020 and hit the pause button. We are now ready to re-engage in a very direct way With that study in cooperation with our consultant NFP. And information is going out this week to In terms of the information gathering process is starting this week. And finally, just a word about our school resource officer program that is Run through our police department with changes the Alpine School District is making. In the district, they are going to be Consolidating their alternative high school options To one facility in American Fork. As you may recall, or you may know, we do have An Alpine School District Alternative High School here in Orem, and we have historically staffed That facility with the school resource officer. We, the district has notified us that at the end of this school year, they are moving that Alternative high school to American Fork and we will no longer need A school resource officer for that facility. That in turn will also change our funding relationship with the school district. And I've already had a conversation with Chief Adams where We will just absorb that school resource position And put that individual officer back into Regular circulation within the police department. So it will not impact The number of FTEs we have in the department. In fact, it will enhance our ability to provide patrol and investigation services Because that specialty assignment will no longer be necessary at the alternative high school. And those are the, those are the updates that I had for you tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jamie. We do have a city council Report from Dave Spencer. Dave, I'll turn the time over to you.
I'll, I'll be really quick. So I'm over the seniors, not much going on there, but they're still A great group of people and very happy all the time Over the beautification and they're going to give that report In city council about the goals and what they've, what we've accomplished. Recreation, we're looking forward to the Fitness Center opening in March and then also with the Hillcrest Park, you know, going over that What the citizens want. Also, I'm over the public safety, which hasn't started yet, but I'm looking forward to That committee and serving on that with the, with the citizens and those that are, that are volunteered for that. So there you go.
Okay, any questions? All right, thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. All right, let's go ahead and, and close our work session and start back up at six o'clock for Regularly scheduled city council meeting. Thank you. Looking good, Milletts.
Look at those small faces. That's good.
Nice to have you with us.
Thank you. Just tell us when to do our stuff.
We will.
What's your countdown to now, Ken and Lanay?
Three weeks. Three weeks from today.
Oh. That's exciting.
You get to have a baby with no pain, Lanay.
Have a baby with no pain, huh? Uh oh, are we still there?
All right, we'd like to go ahead and begin. I'd like to read a notice Of an all-electronic meeting. Pursuant to Mayor Richard F. Brunt's proclamation dated February 4th, 2021, the Orange City Council Meeting Pursuant to Mayor Richard F. Brunt's proclamation dated February 4th, 2021, the Orange City Council meeting on February the 23rd, 2021, will be an all electronic meeting. There will be no anchor location for the meeting. The city cannot ensure the recommended minimum of six feet of social distancing for meeting participants at the usual anchor location in the Orem City Council chambers. Therefore, holding the meeting at the Orem City Council chambers would present a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the meeting and may contribute to the spread of COVID-19. There will be no public access to the Orem City Council chambers. Those desiring to view or participate in the meeting must do so electronically. To view the meeting, please go to orem.org/meetings. To make a comment, please submit your comment through orem.org comments. Written comments will be accepted before and during the meeting. All written comments received will be entered into the record and forwarded to each city council member for review. Written comments will also be read aloud during the live meeting when required by law or when time permits. As technology permits, the city council may also accept oral comments. Once an item has been voted on, that item will be closed to additional comments. Thank you for your cooperation during these challenging times. And now we'd like to call our city council meeting to order, and we'd like to start out with a invocation to be given by Ken Millet, afterwards, afterwards, the pledge of allegiance to be given by Laney Millet. Ken, we'll turn the time over to you.
Our only father, at the beginning of this council meeting, we have to be thanks for the opportunity we have to live here in this wonderful city, this wonderful state, and this wonderful country, which provides us the freedoms that it does. We ask that thy spirit would be with us during this meeting, that the decisions made by the council and those who present will be beneficial to the citizens of Orem. We ask that thy blessings be upon the citizens of Orem, especially those who are suffering due to pandemic and other issues. Bless them with thy blessings, Father, help them in their sorrow. But I see that thou would bless this wonderful country and bless us that we might be able to continue to maintain our freedoms. We thank you for all the blessings that we enjoy, and we pray for these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you, Ken.
Please recite the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ken, thank you, Laney, we appreciate that. Well, now go ahead and go to a presentation from our beautification advisory commission and have a report and update, we'll turn the time over to Reed Price.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just turn the time over to Elaine Parker, who is the chair of the beautification commission. She can do some introductions and, and then move through the presentation.
Nice to have you here, Elaine. So she's on mute. Elaine, can you put your-
Yeah, there, there we go, got it. Okay, um, yes, I'm Elaine Parker, and I am the chair, and our vice chair is Sean Aurulian. Other members on our committee are Erin Aurulian, Cheryl Ann Bennett, Tanya Harmon, Jason Bond, and Vicky Johnson. And David Spencer is on our, our council member that is on our committee. Our vice chair, Sean Aurulian, is going to do our presentation, and I'll turn the time over to him.
Thank you, Elaine. I guess Reed, go ahead and change slides now. Now, this is our mission statement, and we have not changed it, we've had this for a couple of years now, but I'll go ahead and read it. It says, "The Orem Beautification Advisory Commission seeks to preserve and enhance the beauty of Orem City. We strive to inspire businesses and residents to continually beautify their surroundings through city-sponsored initiatives, events, and programs." All right, and there's a picture of the commission members we have. We are missing Vicky on that picture, but that's everyone else, we can go to the next slide. Talk briefly about our accomplishments, and no, that little COVID virus right there was not an accomplishment. Okay, next slide. So we had a lot planned last year, and we were getting ready for a lot of events, and we were excited for the year, then everything happened in March and shut things down. We planned on doing our Summer Fest Parade entry and, and having that a lot bigger than we had in years past. Obviously, Summer Fest never happens, so we couldn't do that. Arbor Day, we weren't able to participate in that, those activities. So unfortunately, we didn't get stuff done with that. But things that we could do, we had free gardening classes and garage sale rules and regulations posting, so people understood in the city what that was all about, how you could post, and the regulations for that, so we didn't have cluttered signs, cluttered posts in the city, you know, like light posts, things like that. And also, we continued our social media outreach with Facebook, which has been very successful. We've had a lot of people constantly adding likes and joining that page as well, so that's been a very good way to connect with the community. We had our beautification awards through holiday decorations as well, and we're gonna go through some of those slides and show you some of the beautiful yards that we have in our city. We'll just kind of, I'll just have Reed kind of scroll through, this is a map of the city and how it's broken down in our commission as far as who covers what area. Each area, each color is a certain commission member, and they're responsible for giving out awards to those different areas, and you can see those are marked. So go through our residential beautification awards, and I'll just let Reed kind of slowly scroll through that. You guys can get a glance of some of these beautiful yards that we have in our, in our city. Yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, there's some areas that need help, but you know, we really have some talented city members, and a lot of effort put into, into making their yards look lovely, and we really appreciate that. I, I'm constantly amazed at some of the things I see and, and the effort that people take to, to make the city look nice and their yard. So it's always, it's always great every year when we have this opportunity to recognize them for their efforts. We also had the business beautification awards that were handed out. There were a handful of those given out to different places in our, in our city. Just want to mention, if, if anyone ever has recommendations, any commission members, any city council members, any, any residents, they want to recommend any awards for these people, they can always go on our Facebook page and send us a message, and that's very helpful for us, so we don't have to go out and constantly drive around trying to find them, so if you guys in this upcoming year do have those, please reach out to us on our Facebook page, and we'll gladly look into those. Here are some of the holiday decoration awards that were given out. Some of these houses aren't the biggest and, and newest, but you know, people that live there put some serious effort into making them look nice for the holidays, and we appreciate it, it's always fun to drive down the street and stop and, and look at the lights with the, the family.
Yeah, those are beautiful.
All right, so real quick, this isn't gonna take long, the, the goals we have for this coming up year, we'll go over these. First one to promote worthwhile practices that enhance the beauty of Orem, and so how are we gonna do that? Go to the next slide. First, we're gonna encourage Orem residents and businesses to beautify their yards and properties through the recognition awards that we've just talked about. And we're also gonna continue to recognize both during the holiday season for their efforts in decorating with lights and displays. We want to continue with Arbor Day activities so that we can sustain our Tree City USA designation. It's important that we plant trees, we, we appreciate that we have a lot of trees in our city, and that they're well maintained. Goal two, promote the roles and activities of the beautification commission. We're gonna continue to promote the commission and the beautification activities, and the education offered through its Facebook page and city newsletter. And we're really excited to participate in Summer Fest, hopefully, things will work out, you know, we're waiting to see what the final verdict is on that and, and what we can do, but whatever we can do, we will be a part of it, so. Yeah, and that is our presentation, we, we appreciate your effort, your, your support as a city council, and always look forward to criticism or advice, or whatever you guys think we can do to better view our jobs as commission members. Thank you.
Well, it's a beautiful city, and thank you to the beautification commission. One thing I would maybe bring up is if, as you drive through the city, if there are places within the city that you think we can, as a city government, beautify our own grounds, it'd be nice to hear about that.
Great, thank you for the recommendation.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it very much. Thank you, Lane, and Sean. All right, we'll go ahead and move on now to our personal appearance time. We have set aside 15 minutes. We have set aside three minutes per person, and these comments are to be given on areas that are not within our agenda for this evening. So Steve Downs, do we have anyone who has put forth a personal appearance yet?
Yeah, two, two comments, Mayor.
While you're doing that, I'll start the 90 seconds for any additional comments, though, go ahead.
This first one comes from Galen Rosenthal regarding the water tank. The property of 444 South 400 West is a great location for the water tank, well, pump house, and water lines. A written letter was emailed Saturday to the mayor, city council, and staff, giving many details for this choice of location, which would take longer than the three minutes allowed. The following are a few thoughts from the letter. No one can put a money, can put a money price on the disruption enclosure of the busy Orem Community Park area, high school sports and other sports, tennis courts, playground pavilion, access to the new Orem Fitness Center, family time, and children and students going to school safely for a couple of years. This project is like doing a remodel job in the park versus building new at the 440 South 400 West. Most contractors prefer new construction, saves a lot of time and money, and has less unforeseen issues and complications. Both areas have concerns that are the same, like school safety, construction time, inconvenience, dust, devalue of homes, and a multiple, and a, and a multiple of other concerns. Utility rates will rise regardless of the area. This is in fact a reality, this is a fact of living in the real world. In all my years, I've never seen utilities or property taxes, which generates money to the city, decrease. A statement was made at the February 18th meeting regarding homes directly affected at the two locations, Orem Community Park and 444 South 400 West. There are 15 home properties in the park area that border touch the park boundaries, including the two homes on 600 West that will be highly affected. Also, all the people who use the park, there are nine home properties that border touch the 444 South 400 West property, which has no access and is fenced entirely. No one uses the orchard but at the owner's permission. The Orem Community Park would be highly disrupted while the 444 South 400 West property is not used by public. It would be great to turn the 444 South 400 West area into more green park space and not more housing and traffic. Call the park, Farley Park, to remember and honor the owner. The property of 444 South 400 West is a great location for the water tank, well, pump house, and water lines. That's the end of that comment, Mayor. Next is Lisa Richards. Stop to reconsider that there is no need for more pickleball courts. Stop assuming your personal opinions are representing the majority of Orem residents. What is the rush on pushing Hillcrest Park development and assuming you have a thorough understanding of what serves all of Orem best? So you, you are telling me that this group of 40 to 60-year-old council members know what kind of parks the younger families want? How many children will use 16 pickleball courts? You are aware that Orem has a new massive indoor pickleball facility? Question mark, you think just one person opposes this and will hold up your hasty plan? Question mark. I don't care if you like number two or number three, when there is little differences between them. These ideas are stuck with thinking inside the box, and what hinders Orem development from ever succeeding or serving the residents well? Mayor, that's the end of the submitted, the comments submitted ahead of time, I'll check with Pete to see if there's any others.
Okay, our time is up.
And no, yeah, no other comments at this time, Mayor, for the personal appearances.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the personal appearances portion of our meeting, and go on to our consent items. On our consent items, if there are any items that the council would like to have put into our regular scheduled items, please let me know. We start out on 8.1, approval of city meeting minutes of January 26, 2021, and February 9, 2021, city council meetings. 8.2 is appointments to boards and commission. Reappointment of Becky Buxton to the Transportation Advisory Commission. Appointment of Laney Millet to the Transportation Advisory Commission. And a new appointment of Stephen Heaps to the CDBG Commission. 8.1, yes.
I just have a correction, I've known Stephen for 50 years, not 40.
Okay, I didn't think you were that old. 8.3 has been pulled from our agenda and will not be considered this evening. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the consent items, is there a second?
I get it.
Okay, I'd like to go through and take a vote on that. First of all, I'd like to hear from Jeff Lamson.
Aye.
Okay, Debbie Luray.
Aye.
Tom McDonald.
Aye.
Terry Peterson.
Aye.
David Spencer.
Aye.
And Brent Sumner.
Aye.
And I, Mayor Brunt's vote, aye as well, our consent item agenda passes, and we'll move now down to our scheduled items. Our first one is a public hearing, and this is to allow public input regarding, A, the issuance and sale of not more than $45 million aggregate principal amount of water sewer and storm sewer revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2021, the bonds, and B, any potential economic impact that the project described herein is to be financed with the proceeds of the bonds issued under the act may have on the private sector and all related matters. So this is a public hearing, we are going to open it up to the public for any public comment, and we've got 90 seconds, and if anyone would like to make public comment, please do so. And Steve, if you have any comment, feel free to start to read them.
None ahead of time, Mayor.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public input portion of our public hearing, and move on to our next scheduled item, which is 9.2. This is a public hearing, amending portions of sections 22-24-5F2C, of the Orem City Code pertaining to setback requirements and building setback requirements in the state street district zones. And our presenter is Jason Bench. in the State Street District Zones. And our presenter is Jason Bench. Jason, we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, can you see the full screen of my presentation?
Can you make it larger? It's kinda.
Yeah, I think I'm sharing the wrong screen. Let me. Is that better?
Not really. You're about a half a screen. I mean, we can live with it if that's all you've got.
I can do better than that. Hold on one second.
Okay.
Sorry about this.
Jason, try hitting Windows P, hold Windows and hit P, and then hit duplicate monitor. Or duplicate display. And then try it.
How's that? Any better?
We just see your small picture.
No, you're not. She was not sharing a screen yet.
All right.
You're an old hat at this.
I know. I can't believe I'm having such difficulties with this stupid thing.
Don't get violent.
Let me try it again one more time.
I'd say just run with that. You're not full size, but it's good enough.
So that's not any better, right?
No, you're going backwards.
For heaven's sakes.
But I'd say go ahead and go with what you got. We can put our glasses on.
Well, I don't know why it's doing this. I've never had this issue before. Sorry about that.
It's okay. That's good enough right there.
Okay, so we'll just go with that. Assuming I can switch the screen. So this is before you, we went to discussion about a month ago with the council to talk about the North Village. We also talked about other districts and the Arts District was another one that we brought forward. What we're here tonight is to show, and we had that discussion, we held a neighborhood meeting last Wednesday on the seventeenth. We had about thirty neighbors that came on our Zoom conference call to discuss the options. The screen you have before you tonight is the North Village district in the fifty foot setback that we're proposing around any area that is adjacent to a residential zone. You can see the yellow is residential, the also the North Village District Res B Zone, which you can see on the top right of your screen. We went on the backside of that so that any developer would have to meet that setback on the backside and not on four hundred West.
So it's the back of the property lines of the houses is where the setback starts.
So that, yeah, the fifty foot and then the maximum height within that fifty feet would be thirty-five feet. In addition to that, the existing setback requirement of equal to the height of any residential zone would also be in play. So whichever one is the more restrictive, we would require. So there's two different setbacks now that would be in play in this specific district. The next one is the Arts District. I know, Mayor, you had a, wanted us to include this and what we're, to be with what we were doing in the North Village is there's only one portion of this district on the top. You can see the AD Res, that's the only area that's the residential similar to the Res B up in the North Village. The rest of it is either core or civic. And the rest of the district dis surrounded on all four sides, except for the very south, which is the commercial zone with Orm Boulevard, four south, the fourth east. And so we felt comfortable proposing option one, which basically just allows this fifty foot setback with a thirty-five maximum height that would surround that AD Res zone. As you recall, that there's a new elementary school that was just built to the south, so I doubt that's ever going to be redeveloped. The city obviously owns the park that's south of that, so I don't know that there's gonna be much development in the civic zone. The real major development redevelopment is going to be in the core zone, which is surrounded either by State Street or Orm Boulevard or eight south. And so we felt this is reasonable as far as the option. The one that we originally presented to the council as option two takes in the buffer from the street itself, which we have, like I say, at least a minimum fifty foot wide street on all these parameters. I'm not sure that the option two is really applicable in this instance, and option one would be our preferred option. That's what we're presenting, the both options, because we did present option two, but feel that option one is more reasonable. Any questions on these two maps before I go to the next?
So option one for the North Village setback and option one for the Arts District is what you've just shown us.
Right, we only have the one option for the North Village. We've always been working with, because we do have more property, excuse me, the North Village that abuts to a residential zone on the backside of some of these properties. So that's, it's very much appropriate there. Fourth West, we've, they're in the process of rezoning and we've discussed that briefly with the council. Those nine are eight lots on Fourth West back to our eight. That's in process. We'll be coming to the council end of next month. But we've, we've modified the ordinance since we've met to actually go on the backside of those homes, so.
So how do you, how do you describe this if not option one?
It would be option one, you're right. But there's only one option for North Village.
Okay.
Jason, this is Debbie. How was the thirty people that showed up at the meetings? Were they mostly for the North Village? Were they mostly for the arts? And if so, what was their feedback?
And mostly North Village. There were, had quite a few chatting comments. Majority of them just wanted to know what the process was. We had several property owners that are in the potential R eight zone. We just wanted to make sure what that process would be. We had some that were frustrated that we couldn't meet together and discuss, you know, face to face. We're limited on the ability to have conversation, you know. We did probably have thirty, and I think you have a copy of the chat questions that we had, but we probably had thirty to forty questions related to traffic and other things like that. We tried to focus just on the issues at hand, which was the setback and the rezone, and so we kind of limited the questions and answers to those.
And I think most of those people were in favor of what option one is.
Yeah, I think any concerns were more a district overall, not necessarily for these setbacks that are proposed tonight.
Jason? Did, did the homes on the west side, did they all agree with what we're doing?
On the west side of which one?
On the west side, the homes.
Of, of North Village?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all, all, well, except for the one to the south, which was the one that wanted to have the potential rezone. The rest of those, we did have something signed by each of the property owners wanting to go back to the R eight zone. So the majority of those property owners are in agreement that they want it to be rezoned back.
Okay, thank you.
And that, just to keep in mind that by rezoning them back to R eight, it would allow on that west side that they would have to not only meet this fifty feet, but also equal to the height of any structure, which would then, you know, probably be a greater setback. So there'd be two setbacks that they'd have to meet. So once this rezoned, I think it would be sufficiently safe to say that any impact would be limited to the middle of the property and not next to the residential property. This is the graphic we had before the council, based on the street, fifty feet, thirty-five feet. This is an example of the one graphic we showed before. The one on the bottom is a new graphic that kind of shows an existing home, twenty-five foot setback, and then the fifty foot setback that we require with a maximum thirty-five feet and the step back that's also required. So it would still, you could see the open area that that would be, both of those requirements built in would, would still allow a pretty significant step back or setback from the residential property. The other requirement that we're looking at tonight is, if you can look on the picture to the, in the upper right. No, this is just text. Sorry, now I go to this picture. This is the, what we're looking at is if this is a two-story building, let me turn on my laser pointer. Oh, maybe you can't see my laser pointer. Anyway, the two-story building, what we're proposing is right now the ordinance requires any building that has residential above has to have the step back, that twenty-foot step back on the first level. What we're proposing is if a developer comes in and wants multiple story of commercial, that that step back be associated with the residential portion of the building and not just at the first level. So in this picture that you're seeing before you, if it's a two-story commercial and then you've got the step back for the residential, that's the direction that we're wanting to to go. And the next building kind of shows the same thing with buildings that have a two-story commercial component and then the residential or above that. What we're wanting to do is associate that step back area, that twenty-foot landing area which would, which would have amenities for the residential portion of the development, be a part of that residential development and not have to come down and through a commercial portion to access that, because it is designed specifically for residential uses and not for the commercial. The way the ordinance is written right now, commercial itself does not require that. So if somebody wanted to come in and build a four-story office building, they wouldn't have that step back requirement. It is only required if part of the building contains residential uses. So this ordinance that we're proposing would basically allow that step back to be at the same level as the residential starts. If somebody comes in with a four-story and after the first level they want that residential, then they would have to step it back on the first level. If they wanted to come in with a two-story commercial and then three stories, they would step it back on the second level. So hopefully that's understandable. So those are the two different requests before you tonight. We did go to the planning commission. The planning commissions made positive recommendations on all of these and be glad to address any questions.
All right, if no questions from the council, this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open it up to the public for any comments. Steve, if you're there, we'll go ahead and start now with our ninety seconds. And if you get any comments, let us know.
Mayor, I do have some comments submitted ahead of time. We'll start with those. First one is from Stephanie. If I pronounced the name wrong, I apologize. Visna, V I S N A W. I appreciate the council's consideration in implementing, implementing a fifty-foot setback from the back of the property. Lines of homes in the residential B zone of the North Village District and adjacent residential zones. Zoning efforts to buffer residents from commercial properties crucial in maintaining the desirable and higher value residential properties. It is my request that the city council consider increasing this setback from fifty feet to one hundred feet wherever a NVDE edge zone abuts a residential zone. Edge zones are designed for mixed commercial residential use with building heights restricted by parking and setback requirements. There are many cases in the North Village District where edge zones abut R eight zones. It is my understanding that mid-density Res B zones are transition zones to step down from commercial to standard residential zones. Many standard residential zones of the North Village District abut edge zones and do not have a Res B zones as a transition, which allows taller, commercial, high-density housing to be built right next to an R eight zone. Increasing the setback from fifty to a hundred feet wherever all residential zones abut an edge zone would protect and buffer residential properties that do not have a Res B zone as a transition. Although not on today's agenda, I would further propose that certain edge zones be considered for rezoning to Res B, especially where they abut R eight zones. One such property is between State Street and four hundred West behind State Street Storage and continues to the corner of sixteen hundred North and four hundred West, which does not have State Street frontage. Frontage, not ideal for the required commercial element of an edge zone property. The current Res B homes along four hundred West have applied to be rezoned back to R eight. If this application is approved, rezoning the current edge zones behind it into this south corner of sixteen hundred North and four hundred West to Res B would provide the transition from commercial to residential as well as provide a better use for property that is currently zoned, mixed commercial residential with no State Street frontage or access. I understand that a lot of time and resources have gone into preparing the master plan. However, now is a good time to take another look and approve the, upon the master plan for the North Village District. The master plan states NVD zones are intended to be more residential nature, nature with neighborhood retail and smaller scale development compared to the other four state street districts. Increasing edge zone backs to a hundred feet and rezoning some edge and resby zones in keeping with the master plan script in the North Village District and would be beneficial to all Orm residents involved. Thank you for your time and consideration. Mayor, that is the end of this next one. I will begin the next one. Just as a reminder, if it goes beyond the three minutes, we'll, we'll stop it, but we'll send you on the entire comment.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is Lisa Hell, City Council and City of Orm. A is stated in the Orm City Code of Ordinances, Article twenty-two dash four dash five. Purpose, the North Village District NVD zones are located at the city's northern gateway. The NVD zones are intended to be more residential in nature with neighborhood retail and smaller scale development compared to the other four state street districts. As a resident where whose property abuts the North Village District, I want to thank the commission and council for considering the impact of commercial and high-density development on residential areas. The recent proposal created fifty-foot setback around the NVD Res B zone is a great example of this. Upon further review of the NVD ordinances, I have a few concerns or requests. Residential rezoning, the NVDE and NVD Res B zones are designed to scale back larger development as it nears residential, transitioning from commercial to mid-density residential. There has been a request submitted to change the current NVD Res B zone along four hundred West back to Res eight. If this is approved, it would make sense to rezone the portion of NVDE adjacent to the west and south of this area to NVD Res B. With the currently zoned NVDE, it requires some commercial residential mix. Changing a portion of the NVDE zone, corner of four hundred West and sixteen hundred North, as well as the area behind the homes on four hundred West to NVD Res B with a thirty-five foot maximum building height would allow the step down from commercial to mid-density housing. As zoning ordinances are designed to do benefits, yeah, benefits, changing a portion of the NVDE zone to the NVD Res B would allow a developer to build mid-density housing in an area that already has residential nearby without the commercial restrictions. This would alleviate some of the residents concerned with commercial areas creeping into the resident, into the residential. State street access is limited in this area and eliminating the commercial aspect of this property would help with easement from other surface streets. Property line setback requirements, although the fifty-foot setback behind larger homes on four hundred West is a great improvement, fifty-foot is not very much room to buffer from larger buildings. It would be a huge benefit to all residents near the North Village District to have this setback requirement increased to one hundred feet wherever NVDE abuts a residential eight zone with the NVD Res B as a step down buffer. My home, Res eight and three ninety-nine West, fifteen sixty North is such a property that currently has NVDE on the back fence line. Without doing any rezoning, increasing the fifty-foot setbacks to one hundred feet would help buffer from any further large developments. Street, street setback requirements. Currently, the ordinance is to have any new, new build be ten feet from the sidewalk. As this may work for State Street, it is not conducive to sixteen hundred North or other streets in the district. Having large buildings within ten feet of the sidewalk or less on sixteen hundred does not help with the residential fields that transitions to residential areas. The corridor or boulevard look and feel should be focused on State Street only in the North Village District, commercial and residential access. Mayor, that is the end of the three minutes. I will send on the remainder of the comment.
All right, any other comments?
Yep, there is another one. Anya. And I pronounced the name incorrectly. I hope not. Becerra, B E C E R R A. I appreciate the council's consideration and support at this time, and I ask the city council to consider increasing the setback from fifty feet to one hundred feet wherever NVDE edge zone abuts a residential zone. Edge zones are designed for mixed commercial residential use with building heights restricted by parking and setback requirements. Many standard residential zones of the North Village District abut edge zones and do not have resby zones as a transition. For example, homes behind Mountain America Credit Union, which allows taller, commercial, high-density housing to be built right next to an R eight zone. Currently, all seven residents on four hundred West have applied to change homes from Res B, who are not aware of this change, along four hundred West back to R eight's zone homes, which they should have never changed in the first place. All who are asking council members in city to approve this request in future time, and then if this application is approved, it would facilitate rezoning the current edge zone behind it to Res B. This would provide the transition from commercial to residential, as well as provide better use for a property that is essentially landlocked. Increasing the setback from fifty to a hundred feet where all residential properties abut an edge zone would protect and buffer residential properties. Furthermore, it would lessen the impact of the traffic that is already dangerous and impacting residential neighborhoods. A dangerous example of insufficient setbacks is Quick Quack, which was built right at the corner of sixteen hundred North, so close to residential homes. Our neighborhoods recently experienced dangerous driving conditions and traffic chaos due to enormous lines and blocked traffic. As many of you know, traffic in the area is not an isolated event, and the amount of traffic on 400 West and the intersection of 1600 North and 400 West is at times dangerous. The number of accidents that have occurred at this intersection of 400 West has been, has been significant with people driving over 40 miles per hour. I also request that due to the amount of traffic, that no roads or connecting streets go through 400 West from any commercial or higher density housing. I understand that a lot of time and resources have gone into preparing the master plan. However, now is a good time to take another look and approve the master plan for the North Village District. The master plan states the NVD zones are intended to be more residential in nature with neighborhood retail and smaller scale development compared to the other four straight street districts. Increasing edge zone setbacks of 100 feet and rezoning current edge and res B zones is in keeping with the master plan description of the North Village District and would be beneficial to all Orem city residents involved. Mayor, that's the end of that comment. Uh, the next one, uh, Linay Millitt. I appreciate the work that went into creating the State Street Master Plan and the ideas put forward to help beautify the development along State Street. The residents in my area feel the North Village has some unique issues and request that zoning adjustments be made to address those issues. One, there is no buffer zone for the homes on 400 West. There should be a transitional res B type zone with the State Street core zone and the homes on 400 West. The edge zone is not sufficient buffer and res B zone designation would be more appropriate up to the 1800 North boundary. The res B zone would be in keeping with the purpose of this node, as stated in the State Street Master Plan, is intended to be more residential in nature. Please rezone the intersection of the northeast node to a medium-density condo-type housing for small commercial office or small commercial office with customary density and, and height. Height restrictions for the property directly behind the home should be revised, and the 50-foot setback should be increased to 75 to 100 feet. The height of the building should transition down from State Street, not from the middle of the node or from 1600 North. The land behind and to the south side of the home should have res B height restrictions. The homes need a greater buffer than 50 feet. 75 or 100 feet would be in keeping with smaller transitions found in the areas of Orem where medium-density housing abuts to single-family housing. Three, building setbacks should be no more than zero to 10 feet from the curb. Or should, sorry, should be more than zero to 10 feet from the curb, and the shoulders on 1600 North should be increased to the customary width found on other large collector streets. Eastbound 1600 North has extremely narrow shoulders on the north and south sides. Several times, an accident or local business travel have created extreme traffic issues for residents as 1600 North is a main transportation gateway for the North Orem area. Zoning setbacks that would allow for an opportunity to widen 1600 North to 400 West would be wise and would reduce future cost of problems. A wider shoulder between the street and the sidewalk would provide greater safety for pedestrians. A walkable community provided for the safety of pedestrians, and that area is not safely walkable. Four, a requirement for businesses to provide a few, few street visible parking spots would provide for a safer, more visible parking area for women versus all parking in the back of the building. I had an unsettling experience once where a man approached me in a parking lot that was secluded behind a building. I was grateful the business had a security guard patrolling the parking lot, requiring a few parking options in the front would provide a safe option for those seeking one. For consider, please consider this for State Street. Thank you for helping us to preserve our neighborhoods and for the safety of our streets. That is the end of Linay's comments. One more, Jim Conde, one more at this time, assuming no more come in. I appreciate the fine people in the planning commission and their willingness to meet with the neighbors near the North Village District to help us understand how the city processes work. These planning people are our neighbors and friends. I'm excited to have my home. One of the homes on the west side of 400 West, 600 North moved back to R8 zoning, allowing for more of a buffer between, behind my property between residential and future commercial or multifamily developments. This is a residential area. We want to keep it residential. Traffic is a problem that takes away from the residential field. 400 West above 1600 North has a major artery for Orem, Linden and Pleasant Grove. The zoning corrections will help reduce the size and setbacks of the commercial development and that is in the plans. The next concern, the existing traffic and future traffic on 400 West above 1600 North. Any development in the northeast corner of the NVD should not be allowed unless it has access to State Street. Please approve the NVD buffer zones to be between the most restrictive regarding the 50-foot setback or more or the setback equal to the height. Also, the rezoning of our eight homes back to R8 as per our petition to the city. Thank you for your consideration. Mayor, uh, council, I believe that is all we have at this time. Pete, anything else? Okay, that's it. And, uh, for all the information, I was not yawning because of the comment. It's my personal sleep habits. I want to make sure nobody was offended. Thank you.
Well, we didn't want to keep you up. So Debbie Larray, you've got a question or comment?
Yes, Jason, several of those comments, uh, wanted to do more than the 50 feet. I heard 75 and 100. Um, is there a reason we wouldn't want it bigger or do you think 50 is sufficient? Can you kind of give me some, your opinion on that?
In my opinion, 50 feet is sufficient, especially when you take into account equal to the height of the building. You're going to have two different restrictions. The more, uh, you go back 35 feet, if, let's say we go back 100. In the instance of the, uh, storage facility, that's half their property. So the more, uh, the ability we take away from a developer to actually redevelop their property, the less likely it's going to be redeveloped. In this instance, I think 50 feet is acceptable. 100 feet, I mean, obviously is a doable thing, but it's going to take, chew into their property and it's really going to be unreasonable, uh, in my opinion, for them to have to meet that 100-foot setback.
What about 75?
I think 50 is sufficient, in my opinion, especially with the equal to the height requirement, where it's going to step back, whatever that height's going to be, it has to be equal to that. That's, that's built into the ordinance, and I think that is, the purpose of that was to have a buffer between residential and whatever's built on in the district. So that's, in my opinion, is already taken into account.
Thank you.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So Jason, um, if we look at the State Street Master Plan and, and the cities that we visited, say in Oregon, you know, the, the, the whole gist of it is to put, um, commercial and residential on State Street, and then that's built up and then it feathers down into the neighborhood. And right now, I don't see that feathering into the neighborhood. I, I see that, um, invading that, that neighborhood there, and I don't like it. So I, my thing is, what happens if we go 75 feet? I think that would be a, a good buffer because I still don't think that we're this edge district with the State Street. It's supposed to be pushed to State Street, and now we're pushing everything towards the residential neighborhoods. And I think that, that, I think we're missing the, the, the point here, and, and we're too close to residential neighborhoods, and I think we need to do a better buffer than 50 feet.
But you gotta realize, if you don't mind me answering that question, the, the district itself is not very wide. Uh, State Street, the depth of State Street and all the small properties you can see on the map. I mean, there's no way a small property on State Street can do anything but what they have. It's going to take multiple properties. Uh, this was a C2 zone prior, so we're not taking any residential property that we hadn't done before with commercial property as a C2. So this district was designed to fit into the neighborhood. Uh, granted that obviously that's, you know, about a 300-foot width from State Street to the neighbors, but that was the intent of, you know, State Street to begin with. It, it's not a very wide, uh, district, and we're going to have some, uh, properties that are going to abut a residential, which is why we put, built in the equal to the height setback requirements. If, if you have too restrictive of setbacks or too restrictive of height, we're never going to redevelop anything on State Street. And if that's the direction, then I guess that's the direction. But I think we're missing the boat on that.
Well, I think too, is if we, if we start with the commercial and residential on facing State Street and then feathered it back in the neighborhood, that's my concern because we're not feathering it back. It's, it's going to be, all of a sudden now it's 35 feet, now you have this huge building. So the other question I have is, we are not, um, on 400 West, we're not letting any access from that, that parking lot or whatever into, onto Fourth West, correct?
That's correct.
And then what do we, I also noticed the, you know, the old Minneke building, there is a bunch of cinder blocks or a big, uh, you know, cement blocks blocking a driveway. Is that going to stay there or is that going to be blocked off?
I have to look, I'd have looked at that. I know that they're trying to restrict some of the inlet to that, but at this point, I'm not aware of anything being restricted.
There's one in and out that goes, you can turn left on the, on the 1600, but then if you go further west, there's four big cement blocks that are, it's a driveway. And my, my concern there is, you know, that's going to have to go away too.
Yeah, most likely. When something comes in to redevelop, that will be definitely looked at and, and access will be limited to a certain location.
Oh, my, uh, in my opinion is, I'm fine with the 75 foot because I would push everything towards State Street and not towards residential. Thank you.
Hey, uh, Terry Peterson, did you have a comment?
Uh, yes, I, I have the same concerns, but I think I'm hearing from some of the others that I, I think we need to be, it's very important as a city that the first priority is protecting the homeowners, um, and not worried about putting, you know, what we can stick on State Street. So I also would be in favor of, uh, you know, 50 feet is way too close. 75 to 100 feet is a strong message, I think, to the citizens that we're trying to do what we can that protects homeowners.
Okay, Brent Sundar has a comment?
Uh, now, David mentioned they, uh, exit on, onto Fourth West. If that corner's developed, south corner, can you still come on Fourth West from that edge down there?
No.
So there will be nothing on Fourth West?
No, there would not be any access on Fourth.
Okay, and if this, uh, is voted down, it goes back to the original C2, right?
No, the zone is already in place. This is simply requesting the 50-foot, 35-foot maximum height that you see outlined in the red. That's what we're proposing tonight. We're not proposing rezoning anything back to C2 or anything at this point. It stays North Village District.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, this is, this is Jamie.
Yeah, go ahead, Jamie.
I think, if I may, consideration also needs to be given to those property owners who would be impacted by this change. If in fact the will of the council is to change the setbacks, and in this case, right now, the conversation is to add 50% to that proposed setback, I think it would be appropriate to notice and to advise those that find themselves in this zone and make them aware of the council's interest in doing this so that they too have an opportunity to voice their opinions and provide feedback relative to change as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Um, Jason, could you go back to the, one of the last drawings you showed where it's 20-foot in and 20-foot high? So, uh, if you look down at the bottom right there, um, you can see the house that's there. Most of the houses are not up against the property line. They're a ways back. It is 25-foot, uh, requirement on the back yards of their houses?
Yes, that's a standard setback.
Okay, and then from there, you go basically 20-foot and then up 20-foot, another 20-foot, up 20-foot. Is that correct?
Right, yeah. In this example, it's 14-foot increments like to the top, just showing that, yeah, it's step back equal to the height. So if it's a 20-foot, same is applicable, yes.
So you've got 25 feet to the property line, then you have another 50-foot, uh, that we are proposing here, that would have a maximum of 35-foot in height. And, and anything you build up, you have to go back the distance equal to the height.
Correct.
So to get up to 35-foot, you've got to go up 35-foot. I mean, you've got to go back 35-foot to go up 35-foot, right?
That's right, yep.
So you've got the 50-foot, then you've got the 35-foot, and then you've got the 25-foot from the house. So I think there's plenty of room, uh, there for, uh, you know, modification from a high building, um, because you're going to have the 25 plus the 50, that's 75. And then you're going to have another 35 before you can even get up to 35, which is the, uh, amount of height that the house is allowed to have. And, and so I really feel like that's 105 feet right there. Basically, I feel like that's what they're, uh, considering and asking, and this, as Jamie said, I think we need to look at property rights for both sides, both the homeowners and the people that own the commercial property. But you've, you basically have 105 feet back from the house, uh, before you have a building that goes up 35 feet, equal in height to what the house would be. So I feel like this is a, a good compromise, and I feel like the 50-foot, you know, originally the 50-foot was going to come from the edge of the street, and we've moved it all the way back to the back of the lot. And I don't know how big some of those lots are, but they look fairly large in size. Um, so I, I would not be in favor of going to 75 to 100 feet. I believe you're taking away the rights of the property owners in the commercial section, but I believe that the residents are protected by the 25-foot to the backyard, then the 30, then the 50-foot from there, and then the 35-foot from there. That's, that's 105-foot. So I, I believe we're there. Um, anyway, this is a public hearing, so if there's no other comments, let's go ahead and open it up to the public for public comment. And, uh, we'll start our 90 seconds right now. And Steve, do you have any?
Mayor, is this a, I apologize, did we already finish this public hearing?
We already had the public hearing, Mayor.
Yeah, we already had the public.
We did. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right. So we don't want to go back to that. Um, so anyway, uh, any other comments from the council? Debbie, you have a comment?
So Mayor, if we approve the 50 today, which would improve it, we can still go back at a later date and tweak that a little bit. I guess I'm feeling like, um, I want to at least change it and improve it, but then I, I'm not sure that can't be tweaked a little bit more later on. Is that correct?
Well, if somebody has a commercial building, they're going to start to build, and we've approved this in the zone, then you can't go back and change their building.
No, I realize, but if we don't change it tonight, then we don't have these protections of the 50 feet. What I'm saying is, I think we need to do the 50 feet, but I, I heard a lot of, you know, saying we should do 75 or 100. I want to kind of look at that. Um, so if we, what I'm saying is, we approve the 50, I can still go back and tweak it, um, later. Is that correct?
It, it could be another application, yes.
So the city would do an application?
And if we don't improve it, it's, it's, I mean, don't go the 50 feet, then...
Be stuck with 50 feet from the street.
From the street, okay. So this is definitely an improvement. That's what I'm trying to get at. We can at least make a...
You're not going to have the R8 zone for the houses along 400 West. You're going to lose all that.
So this improves the situation, and we can still look at that setback if we want to later?
Yeah, potentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a comment. So if, if we move forward, we're safeguarding the 50 feet from the property line, but then if we have four council members that would like to bring this topic back up, we can go ahead and put that back on the agenda and make application?
Um, you could, potentially.
I mean, I, I'm just trying to clarify.
No, I mean, the planning, the planning commission has already approved, uh, making the change with the 50-foot from the street. So we either, if we change 50-foot from the back of the lot line, that's fine, and that takes out the 50-foot from the street. If we don't pass this, um, and we're, we're not together on it, then you go back to the 50-foot from the street and you lose the R8 zone for the houses on 400 West, so...
Well, the R8 zone is a different application, Mayor, so that's not before you tonight.
I know, but what I'm saying is, we're talking about the 50-foot behind all the houses.
Right.
That leaves that portion open for when that comes up, so...
Correct.
So I think you'd have some unintended consequences. All right, uh, well, then I would like to make a motion.
My hand's up, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Um, is, if Heather is still on, I'm wondering how we, at what point does the, the business owner say, wait a minute, you can't keep making changes on property that I own? I think you were referring to that, Mayor. Uh, we have this that we could approve, but if we don't approve it, I'm fearful the business owner could start going with the, um, the, the rules currently under, underway or on the books. And so if we don't approve this, I mean, how many changes can we make before this business owner says, wait a minute, I, I bought this land with these rights? I wondered, Heather, if you could clarify that, or maybe Jason, you can. I I bought this land with these rights. I wondered, Heather, if you could clarify that, or maybe Jason, you can. I apologize if I directed that question to the wrong person.
No, um, Jason, if you want to take it, that's fine. Steve Earl is also on the line and can speak to this particular legal issue.
Yeah, uh, Mayor, this is Steve. In answer to Tom's question, you know, basically, you can make as many changes as you want, as long as there is a reasonable or a rational basis for each decision that you make. You have the right to change your mind. You know, if you may, if you establish one standard and, you know, in in two weeks or two months or whatever, you feel like you should have done something different, you you can still do that. Uh, the the real uh, test is when some, when a developer or property owner makes an application to actually do a development on the property. At that point, they're locked in. They get to develop under the standards that apply or exist at that time, and you can't change it as to them. But you can still change the standards for everybody else, essentially. So, uh, again, you you can, you could keep, you can keep changing the standards and changing your mind again, as long as there is a rational basis for what you're doing. Um, obviously, these districts are kind of something new, and we're, we're learning and, um, uh, you know, when when we have actual uh, development proposals that are on the table, we start to think about issues maybe in a little bit different way than we did when it was all theory. So, uh, again, you know, you you can make changes in the future if you want to do that.
So Mayor, I've got a question.
Sure, go ahead. Brent has a comment too.
Okay, well, to to for Tom, to Tom's point. So we have this, uh, the planning commission approved, you know, the fifty foot setback behind the 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 neighbors.
The planning commission uh, approved the fifty foot from the street.
Right, so my question is, if we tabled this and said, hey, we want to talk more about the neighbors and the and the business owners, are we locked in with the fifty feet, the fifty foot setback, or can they come in and and build or put a permit in and go ahead and start building when it goes back to the curb or the?
The answer to that is you're protected with the what's being proposed tonight. Um, a developer could not come in, uh, well, if a developer came in, they would have to comply with these requirements. So you're you're basically protected at this point.
Even though we didn't pass it?
Even though, I mean, if you're continuing the item because you want to think about it a little bit more, yeah, you're still protected.
Okay.
If you voted no on it, of course, then you would lose that protection.
Okay, uh, Brent, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Jason, I, what the mayor just said, I want to make sure I have, understand what it, what he meant. If we approve this tonight, it's the fifty foot from the property line, back property line, right?
Correct.
And if we don't, it goes back to the front, the, the front of the property line.
Uh, until such time as those properties are zoned to R eight. That's correct. So this is probably the first option to protect the neighbors on Fourth West is to approve this tonight to allow that fifty foot, thirty five foot maximum around the backside of their bill, our properties, yep.
But it has to go to R eight first?
No, 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 no. This fifty foot, thirty five foot would be approved tonight if the council approves it, regardless of whether it's owned R eight or the res B, the same restriction would apply.
But the edge zone would be past the homes, so that option would be available.
Right, well, this, yeah, this is in the edge zone, this fifty foot, thirty five.
Edge zone, right, right, would be fifty feet from the back of the property line. It's not, those homes have not been uh, rezoned R eight, but they can't be rezoned R eight if we leave the edge zone the way it is.
Uh, yeah, they can. They probably will be rezoned R eight. That wouldn't affect this.
If, if we left the uh, edge zone fifty feet from the curb.
Well, right, right now, the, yeah, the setback is from the curb, right, under current standards. This is going to move it back behind those.
If we pass it.
If you pass it, yes.
Do we have an application on this property, Jamie?
There's no application currently.
So this does actually protect the neighbors by putting the fifty foot zone behind the fence line. And again, if you look at the, where the homes are placed on the lots, there's quite a bit of property there between that and the fence line.
Right.
So I I guess the question is, do, does, do we have enough that people want to delay it for two weeks, or do we want to move forward?
So I I'm interested in adopting the fifty foot uh, from the back fence line. How's everybody else looking at it?
I I'd like to delay.
Okay, Terry, do you have a question?
Well, same, I would like to delay this until we have uh, more information and think about it.
What additional information were you looking for?
I don't need the more information. I guess I just have a a very uncomfortable level with the fifty feet. That's, so I I'm not willing to pass the fifty.
And I unders, I understand that. I think what's important, and Jamie brought this up as well, is there's two sides to this fence. So the property owners of the commercial properties may come back and say, no, we want to push back the other way. So anyway. So we have two that would like to continue it. Are there two more that want to continue it?
I, Mayor, I, I wouldn't have a problem going two more weeks. I I'd like to get this right, and I I guess what I need to do is physically go down there and and look at it.
Okay, that's three. Do we have one more that wants to continue it?
You know, Ma, Mayor, I'm okay to continue it. I, I want to protect those, you know, I like moving it. I like the direction. It's just the fifty feet in my, is that where there needs to be a little bit more? And so that's the part I want to protect those homes. I want to, you know, make sure that it's from the back of the property, but it's the fifty feet. I need to see if if we should go a little bit bigger, farther, I mean, longer with wives, so.
Yes, go ahead, Heather.
I was just going to say, if there, we need, if there is going to be continuation, we need a formal motion to continue.
Yes, yeah, no, I know. We're just trying to find out if anybody's gonna have an interest.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Ryan Clark. If I can make a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
We, you know, in an effort to be business friendly, which is part of what we're trying to do here and balance out, that's why we are recommending the fifty feet. We think that that's a good balance. If we are going to study this for two more weeks, um, we would really appreciate some direction um, so that we as staff know what the expectation is.
Well, from my perspective, if we were going to continue it, I would, I would want to hear from the commercial owners of the commercial properties there as well as the residential owners. I would want to hear from everybody within that area. So, all right, at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion that we continue this item until two weeks from today, which I believe is March ninth. Is that correct? At at six o'clock at a city council meeting. Uh, staff, I'm looking to you. It's March ninth, isn't it?
It's ninth, yep.
Okay, um, and then I will need a second on that motion.
I'll, I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, and then we will go ahead and go down the list. Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Luray?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Spencer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sumner?
Aye.
And Mayor Brunstein actually vote nay, but that, the motion to continue passes, and we will take that to March ninth and would encourage staff to involve everybody within that district. All right, uh, Jeff, did you have another comment?
Yeah, um, now that, now that we've done that, um, have we, and maybe this is is part of that process that we're going through, but have we done the math to see what the maximum height of a building there would be? How many stories and what the maximum height would be in that property with with what we're currently proposing?
Versus what we might propose?
Versus what we might, yeah, is there, is there a difference?
I think Jason could figure that out and let us know.
I I'd be curious to, I mean, are we talking about a ten story building? Are we talking about a four story building?
It's all based, based on theory, based on whether or not somebody wants to build a a parking structure or, you know, how they can do that. Economically, I don't know that we're gonna, you know, be able to build something that tall, even though there there are availability maybe there based on a setback. I don't know that we're ever going to get there based on the economy of scale, but that's just my opinion. We can definitely get you that number, though.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
All right, let's go ahead and move on then. And we will move on to a public hearing amending the current fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, and Brandon Nelson is our presenter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Uh, so I'm just gonna kind of run down through the the notes um, that were attached to uh, the budget amendment. So the first item on the, on there are, you know, historically, when we come, we have various grants. Um, these are denoted by a one in the note. Um, those items are grants and or donations um, that the city has received. Um, as you can see, they're in various places and various types um, related to our task, the task force, um, the drug task force and the Heide grant for them, the library, um, various um, donations um, that employees have donated their vacation time um, towards the library and fitness center. Just as as examples of some of the elements related to those donations and grants that is received since the last time um, we brought budget amendments forward. Are there any questions about that particular note?
Uh, question for you, Brandon. What does F C V A C hours stands for? That's on your capital improvement project fund.
Okay, um. Fitness center vacation hours. So the the hours are donated in the general fund, but then obviously the project for the fitness center and the library is in the capital improvement fund, so we have to transfer those dollars from the general fund into the um, capital improvement fund.
And the two thousand nineteen Geo bonds interest, that's coming off the the fitness center and the library hall money?
Correct. Remaining, you know, any money that has yet to be spent on that project, which is almost all spent, but uh, any or many, yeah, there's still some interest on the, those dollars that have yet to be spent.
Okay.
Um, item number two relates, which is one of the items related to, again, the fitness center. Um, you recall, um, money has been set aside over a few years, plus, um, you know, up to four million dollars, and those, the interest associated with that project is being applied towards the fitness center. And so that's what that item number two, up up here at the top, under the Care Tax Special Revenue Fund. Um, that's what those dollars are related to. The mayor mentioned item number three, the interest on the Geo bonds, simply adding that interest and making it available um, to those two projects. Item number four in the water fund. These are, so we receive money from Metropolitan Water District of half a million. Plus, they intend to use four hundred thousand of water fund reserves for the Country Woods Waterline Project of approximately one point eight million dollars. So this is not the whole thing, obviously. This is a port, about half of it. Um, and so it's, that's where the funds for that project are coming from uh, in part. Um, item number five, due to COVID, obviously, the fitness center, um, there were various elements that because of COVID were delayed, and obviously now with some stabilization in our revenue sources and uh, a better understanding of where those are, there are various custodial needs um, and some, uh, I believe some equipment as well for them uh, that it needs to be added to that fund in order to accommodate the opening of the fitness center. Um, and then item number, and that exists both here within the facilities maintenance fund as well as within the recreation fund. Then, uh, item number six, um, the recreation folks have asked that we, as part of, uh, when we open the fitness center that this changed, so this change would take place in essence on March twenty first, right after we have our grand opening. And that the changes be made to be more in line to with other recreation facilities in the county. And so you see the proposed change um, for the children, youth and senior centers in categories. Um, and the age changes that would be associated with um, admissions and or passes, et cetera, that anything that is, you know, uses those categories as a, a pricing model. So those are all of the elements within these budget amendments. Are there questions regarding any of them?
Okay, any comments from the council? Uh, Jeff, you have a question? Jeff Lamson? Okay, that must be an old one.
That was, yeah, that was from before. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so we will now open it up for the public comment. Uh, will take ninety seconds. Um, and Steve, do you want to uh, tell us if anybody sends a comment in or read it to us?
Yeah, Mayor, no, no comments right now.
Okay, and our ninety seconds starts now. All right, our ninety seconds up. Uh, any comments come in, Steve?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll close the public uh, comment portion of our public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any comments from the council? All right, I would make a motion that the city council amend the current uh, Orem fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one budget as outlined. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll start with the vote of Jeff Lamson.
Aye.
Debbie Luray?
Aye.
Tom McDonald?
Aye.
Terry Peterson?
Aye.
Dan Spencer?
Aye.
Brent Sumner?
Aye.
All right, uh, that passes. Uh, thank you, Brandon. We appreciate it. That ordinance has passed. We'll now move down to any items, uh, communication items. Jamie, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I don't. I shared my items earlier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.